Yeah, still not very much space there.
It seems to be.
If I can figure it out, you don't see a problem, do you?
No. I don't know, we need an acre, I don't know why anybody needs an acre, though.
Do what?
I'm just thinking through my head, I'm just talking out loud, I mean, why would anybody need an acre?
That's what you're, where you're right ground, that's just what your minimum standard is.
Right. Well, we got, well, how many acres out there? So it just, it just matters what the acre of land is.
Oh, we're back online, huh?
No, I haven't.
They should now.
Okay, we're back in session. We'll have further discussion later today on. All right, I'm gonna sign this lobby thing along with y'all. No, just me, I need permission to sign it.
You have permission to sign it.
There's no action.
Oh, no action.
Yeah, no.
Okay, you guys members, you get to sign it too. Okay. I guess do I need to add Monica on? Find out real quick.
We'll say Mike.
What's that?
Mike, turn our mics on, anything?
Yeah, my, my mic's on.
Yep.
She's got, she's got trouble.
I may, I'm gonna need to add Monica on.
Thank you, Jody.
Monica didn't, Monica didn't let me know if she's planning on attending today or not. Did she let you know?
She didn't let me know.
So, Spark update. We've been working with Green Bush. We had a meeting with Ashley over at the county clerk's office and myself to look at the county Spark funds and see where we're sitting at with it. We're meeting with, or I'm meeting with Monica and Green Bush on Wednesday. Our report to the state is due on Thursday, so we'll get that, look at that report and get it submitted in a timely manner on, on or before Thursday. So, I know that they have been actively seeking out receipts and going through and making sure that they have all the documentation in place for that. We have been in contact with Terry Surcer on the amount of money that needs to be set aside for the single audit. Any entity that receives over $750,000 from the feds has to go through a single audit. And with us receiving $2.9 million, we'll have to plan on a single audit. So, since August, we've been planning on about $5,000 to budget for that, and that's still in line with what the information we're receiving from Terry. So, we've kept Will Wallace in the loop on that, as he's now in charge of the remainder of those funds. So, he'll need to make sure to earmark about $5,000 for the single audit when it, when it comes. Any other questions on Spark or anything I do?
So, are we in a position to know what's left after the, after the $5,000, if all the bills came in now?
I, I sent that email to HR and they were waiting on all the rest of the credit card receipts to come in so that they have a solid number on how much Will will have.
So, do we know when that'll happen? Maybe?
Kendall, do you know when the credit card receipts will all be in? Friday?
Friday.
She says they got the bill Friday, so hopefully we'll be able to see it this week.
We'll know what, what's left?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. He'll definitely be the first one to know. Yeah, absolutely.
Kendall says they have the bill, but they don't have all the receipts to support.
Yeah, and is...
Yes.
So, they'll have to get the receipts and determine whether those were from the B work or the admin or the IT or, you know, there are several different categories that even some, some usage that wasn't for Spark funds. So, they'll have to go through and, and determine the categories for all of those credit cards.
And ideally, that would be completed before the report that is submitted, or not, is that?
Uh, the report that is submitted on Thursday will be all of the funds that have been submitted through December 4th. So, if the check was wrote before December 4th, it will be reported on Thursday. These credit cards, the check would not have been wrote before December 4th, so they will not be on this report.
Okay.
For the B work, I just wanted to give an update on that. It continues. I've been in quarantine since the 18th. Today is my first day out in the rural world, but it is still going well. It's been great to have the Small Business Development Center there so that we can help coordinate meetings with businesses who are still needing help with, you know, for instance, we had a business reach out that was needing assistance with their state capital reporting. So, we're gonna be able to help them report, you know, to the state. We've had several other businesses who have come to us and needing to put together cash flow and obtain resources. We've helped businesses put together really large applications for revolving loan funds and things like that that have been, hopefully they'll be successful after we get them notified of the result of that. The Healthy Bourbon County Action Team has formally approved to be a partner with B work and will be providing about $2,600 towards the overall project cost going into the new year. So, we will have the physical location of B work and the Healthy Bourbon County Action Team at 17 and a half main going into the new year. We've got about three different other asks out there for funding that have come back as being promising. So, this will give us certainly enough time to have the location and pay the $2,500 needed for Small Business Development Center in addition to the rent that is needed to seek out other grants and apply for them and to, to move forward so that we have some capital to be sustainable. This Thursday is the chamber coffee and ribbon cutting at the B work location. We are requiring face masks and social distancing. If there are community members who are uncomfortable with wearing face masks, we ask that you reconsider attending to our ribbon cutting. That decision was made by our B work committee, which is made up of Deja Clark with the Small Business Development Center, Alicia Johnston with the Community College, myself, Lindsay Madison with the Chamber of Commerce, and Matt McNally with Kansas Works is also on that committee. Any questions about that, or if you guys were planning on attending, we probably should put a notice in on that, or?
Do we need a motion?
If you want to attend.
Are you planning on going?
Uh, what day was it on?
Thursday, chamber coffee, seven, is it seven?
Eight o'clock.
I'm out of town.
Eight o'clock?
Eight AM.
So, then I make a motion that we...
That you guys can attend the, the B work grant.
Allow the commissioners to participate in the ribbon cutting downtown on Thursday.
Chair, second?
Second. Chamber coffee.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries.
Great. And that's all I have for Spark updates and B work updates. Who's in my next on the agenda?
You, the Omni lockbox?
Yeah. Okay.
I'll let you know, last week we had a discussion about the Omni lockbox.
I saw some of it on, on video. So, there's new information since then. So, the four, there are, there are four things that we need to consider when we're considering the Omni lockbox. And I think last week what I saw was there was a lot of discussion about the financial issue on, on the cost. Since the discussion last week, Omni has waived all fees. There will, it will be a free service provided to the county. One of the issues that we need to consider when looking at the processes that we have is customer service, the knowledge of where your check is, the customer knows where their check is at all times, and where to send payments to and have a single source. Omni, of course, would be providing this service with the lockbox. And then also be reassured that this payment is going to be applied to their account in a timely manner as well, too. And with this lockbox, it is sent directly to the account where it's applied immediately. Of course, the financial cost has been taken care of with all, all costs have been weighed. There's also an issue, issue with HIPAA compliance. I know that you guys made sure that those who are handling this 1099 is well-versed and aware of HIPAA and has been involved in this type of work before. But with Omni, they actually have policy in place for HIPAA compliance. Right now, we have several departments that are handling mail that have identifiable, identifiable patient information on it. The outside entity, we need to make sure, has, the organization or whoever you're dealing with has HIPAA compliance policy in place for their location where they are handling patient identifiable information. Another, the last issue that I, I think that the commission should consider when thinking about the Omni lockbox is the streamline of systems. Currently, there are, there are, I would say, three different departments who are handling this patient identifiable information and handing it over. So, we have the clerk who comes in with the mail, it's picked out, picked up by an outside source. I'm not sure where it goes from there, but then it's brought back here to the treasurer's office, who then again handles it and takes it to the deposit. So, that is, you know, certainly an opportunity to streamline all of those handling of information where there is opportunity for human error to drop or to accidentally throw something away that needed to be shredded and is, or is, is just lost, you know? So, to be able to have that all streamlined and automatically sent to one single location will certainly address that. So, you know, it's, it's, it's something that you guys can certainly consider with those four things in mind and rest assured that cost is not an issue.
Okay.
So, real big picture, lockbox is...
Lockbox is a bank account. So, when you get your bill for...
It's a bank account.
Yeah, so if you get your bill for Bourbon County EMS, you would write a check and it would go directly to the bank account where Omni would have direct access and they would see, okay, and they would apply it directly to their account. So, it wouldn't go through all of the different steps that we're going.
Two or three touchpoints.
Yes.
So, it'd be a little more instantaneous as far as crediting the payer's account or the insurance payer.
And, but on the other hand, there's also gonna be some, some people that, that pays the county directly. They don't pay, go through Omni.
And that's what I asked Omni about as well, too. And so, if the, if somebody decided they wanted to come in instead of sending a bill directly to the, the lockbox, the county then would have a place to send the bill directly to.
And we do that now.
So, there's...
So, I'm assuming there's a bank, like landmark bank, that they, then they send it to that bank or wherever that lockbox is serviced, or is it sent to?
It's a bank that, that it would go to, yeah.
Sort of like water payments go to landmark bank, I'm thinking, for the rural water.
Yeah, but I'm not, I'm, I think that is a Waystar is what I was told, but I'm not sure exactly which bank it is.
We don't know if it's here.
It's an Omni bank.
It's an Omni bank and they will have direct communication with Omni, our, our billing service. So, in fact, we are closing the gap between our customer and the billing service that we currently see today.
And right now, the customer relationship, is that all handled by Omni, or?
So, on your bill, you'll have, there, there's somebody for them to call, a single point person to call on that number. We can give it to the different departments on the number to call regarding their bill.
Their, their requirements required to, to, for the billing, past two billing also. And we just recently stopped that process for a short term until some, some issues worked out. So, you know, might be a good time to look.
Yeah, you guys acted very swiftly and appropriately and made sure that the temporary problem was taken care of so that, you know, we can maintain good customer service. I'm presenting to you the different items to consider when moving into a long-term solution.
I think, I think long-term, when we get these issues worked out, we need to come back and really seriously consider this 'cause it probably will save a step.
Uh, you know, there's, there's nothing keeping the commission or Omni from moving forward with the lockbox today.
So, are you suggesting that we, for those four reasons?
For these four reasons, I would suggest the commission move forward with the lockbox.
Let's, let's have a little more discussion.
I think Mr. Hoyt has a question, maybe?
How does Omni make money? They get a percentage off the revenue. They get a certain percentage off of the revenue from the ambulance.
Instead, they just start, like a credit card, they just charge.
Right, every transaction fees.
Yeah.
It just seemed too good to be true.
So, so what? No, they get paid. Yeah, so...
Yeah, well, they get paid.
They, they do the billing and then we've been receipting the payments and, and that process is, uh, we're trying to take some of the steps out of it, so it's more direct, more real-time.
And, and that way, we're also making sure that we're handling patient identifiable information. You know, I do come from a healthcare...
Yes, yes, there's some...
And I know Mercy's do all their own billing.
What?
And I know Omni County does all their own billing.
They have in-house.
They do.
So, does Woodson County.
And I would suggest that just the same as if, you know, Bourbon County were to do the same with doing in-house, they would need to consider all of these different items, too.
I would say, I still feel that they probably need to work through the issues we're working through before we make a decision to get this process finished. My personal feeling.
I wouldn't mind revisiting next week.
Sounds good.
So, I think what is being requested is an update on where we're at with the process of migration and then make a decision.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, it's, you know, I don't have a strong feeling either way. I think that as far as HIPAA compliance, there is a little bit of risk that you guys are at right now.
So, can we amend the agenda to get an update on where we're at with the process?
It'll have to be in executive session, we can do that, when we get some time.
So, why don't we amend the agenda to allow, what, 15 minutes?
Oh, probably so. Do we have the time now?
At 12, well, do we have the time right now? It's 9:50?
We got 15 minutes now. Well...
10 minutes.
Yeah, you got, you got time. Not really.
No.
10 minutes.
So, I, I...
That won't be enough.
I, I think at 12 o'clock, after, you know, added on to the tail end.
So, I will...
And, and the reason for that...
Entertain a motion.
And the reason for that executive session would be?
Um, personnel matters.
Personnel, non-elected personnel to protect their privacy.
That's correct.
So, Kendall, I move we amend the agenda to include another executive session at 12 o'clock, beginning at 12 o'clock for personnel matters involving individual non-elected personnel.
To protect their privacy.
To protect their privacy.
Chair, second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Measurements for this lockbox, reduce receivable time, reduce receivable.
So, so, Michael, let me tell you what I understand the, the issue to be, is there's a, a, there's a lag when a patient or an insurance company pays and when it shows up on their account. And it's narrowing that gap.
And it goes through several different hands in the meantime.
In business, we located our bank posts for our largest customers and the people we wrote checks to we sent to a mountain way off it to Colorado somewhere. It's just all flood, 10 minutes.
Okay.
That's your measurement, is your receivable time if you do.
Well, in fewer hands, that's, it's touching.
So, so, and I, I fielded calls, customer service calls. I got a bill from this, from Bourbon County. It has our name on it. And my insurance company had paid that last month. And then the following month, I got another repeat call. And so, you know, that, that's kind of the nature of what this solution would prevent.
And nobody must be doing a very good job of that, because I'm still getting bills or receipts from 2019 that my insurance company's just now paid.
For the ambulance.
Right.
No, no, it must be here, just Dr. Bill, whatever. It must be a big problem everywhere.
It is.
It is.
I agree, yeah. Thank you.
Hey, thanks, Jody. Terry Surcer, how are you today?
Now, what's the meaning of two different masks? A black mask versus a white mask? Is it like the...
White mask is here. White mask is here, yeah. Black is if I'm out doing black things.
You know, I was wondering if it, the presidential seal, you know, sometimes it's looking to the yellows and sometimes it's looking to the wheat, I guess.
No, it just depends. This one I can talk easier with. The other one is more comfortable, but this one I can talk better, so. And I'll be talking.
This is like having bifocals. Do you have bifocals, too? That's great.
Yeah, oh, I got a lot of issues. Just went to see my doctor yesterday. Yeah, I've got a lot of issues.
Left and, want me to read through this? Please. Well, I mean, have a second copy, you don't need a second copy. Jeff, you want me to read through this? Just received that, received that this morning.
Okay, so, here's the resolution from the city.
Wait, I'm not ready to, just read through it and see what you think.
I've already marked the...
Oh, you've already marked it up?
So...
Well, yeah, we know where it's at.
Okay.
So, you want, you wanna discuss it then? Do we have time?
Sure.
Do you need to do the, to do it? So, I mean, we meant to gender to talk about a resolution from the city concerning annexation. Uh, starting in the next five minutes, it'll be 9:55 to 10. Chair, second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
So, what this is, is a resolution to extend the, the city limits out by where Peerless is, okay? Uh, and it has a legal description that this, the, the piece of property is really 392 feet by 190 feet, roughly. So, it, it's maybe just a portion of their acquisition that goes clear to Jayhawk. Based upon this description, it probably doesn't go clear to Jayhawk. It's a, it's a rectangle that's about 400 by 200 feet.
Isn't that, isn't that the property right straight south of their existing building?
Uh... Black, it has to do with the road, I assume. So, I, what I believe this to be is... Well, I'd have to go plot it out to be for sure, but... East of the hotel, I, I think that makes, makes sense. Yeah, that seems to be about 400 feet. 200 foot wide is this piece of property. And, uh, so, so the paperwork we have is a, is a, a request that's put together by Bill Osborne, who's kind of the owner of Peerless, or as well as Colby Jones, who is the, the site manager for that window company. Uh, and they've requested this from the city. So, um, the resolution then goes on to read that the mayor and the city clerk are authorized and directed to execute for and on behalf of the city of Fort Scott, this resolution is to be forwarded to the board of Bourbon County Commissioners requesting permission to annex land owned by Peerless Products Incorporated into the city limits and to prepare and attach said resolution. A sketch delineating the land proposed annex. Now, I didn't see that sketch, but, uh...
No, there wasn't a sketch attached to it.
There wasn't a sketch attached, but I went up and sketched it on my mind here, so I had an idea where this is at. Annex to the area of the city adjacent thereto and the general land use pattern there, area to be annexed. This request shall be certified and sent by certified mail to the county, board of county commissioners. The governing board of the city of Fort Scott is requesting that upon receipt, the Bourbon County Commissioners make the appropriate findings and notify the governing board of the city of Fort Scott within 30 days pursuant to its statute. And this resolution and its authorization shall continue in full force and effect until amended or revoked. And, um, so this resolution was approved by the governing board of the city of Fort Scott, December 1st, 2020, signed by Dr. Nichols. There's a certificate here. And then there's this, the legal description, communication from Peerless Products. According to that map over there, the city limits encompasses perhaps what currently they, their factory and they're, they're wanting to perhaps build some other facility there.
This is on the second of three steps. Tonight will be, and I don't speak for the city commission in any form or fashion, just in the disclosure, tonight they will rezone that property from commercial to industrial.
Okay.
They've already done one section, which is now their employee parking lot from commercial to industrial, so they can have industry on that property.
So, I move that we, what do we need to do here? So I move that we, uh, what do we need to do here?
Just to approve the annexation.
Approve the annexation request, resolution number nineteen twenty twenty from the city of Fort Scott.
Here, second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries.
If you need that back.
Thank you, sir.
Right on time.
Hey, Terry.
Ready?
I'm good.
Let me give you, you know, I sent a few weeks ago a draft, but, um, Kendall sent me yesterday the financial numbers through November, which helped me, um. Which then I was able to look and see how it had gone. I based the draft you got a couple of weeks ago through October, but after getting November's, I had to change a few more things, because we had some large expenses, were larger than normal in the public safety, you know, uh, the jail and the, and the, um, landfill had a huge expense in November. I don't know if you guys remember what that was, but it was a commodities expense for that month was, year-to-date, it's, um, let me find it here, because this is really interesting to me. Year-to-date, there it is, year-to-date commodities are seventy-three thousand in the landfill fund. But in the month of November, commodities at thirty-seven thousand. So I don't know, half of your expenses for the year happened in November, so I don't know what happened there, but, um, so anyway, these numbers here that you see are a little different than the ones you got a couple of weeks ago. But I think they'll take care of us. The only thing I'll probably add here, it's not essential to be budgeted since it's a grant fund, but I'll probably go ahead and add your Sparks money as an amended budget. Right now, the budget's zero. There's no budget to that fund. But when you have grant money, that becomes the budget. It'll just look a little better if I actually amend it, so I think I'll gra, add that, add that to this. But I need to get the dollar amount. I'll remember how much, is two million seven? I'll find out, I'll find out, and add it. So this needs to be published on Saturday's paper.
Okay.
And then our public hearing will be ten days later, which will be the twenty-second, wherever, oh, there's no calendar in New York. Ten days later will be Tuesday, the twenty-second. So that's when we'll plan on having the public hearing. So, um, I think some of the funds will be a little tight in money. I'm a little worried about, there's, and this is something I'll certainly address when the audit comes, but if you want to address it earlier, that's fine, but landfill's down in revenues substantially, and jail is down with revenues, so, um, the jail budget's being amended here, they spent a hundred thousand more, well, it looks like they're, I'm increasing their budget by about a hundred thousand. And, um, they didn't have any jail receipts, which doesn't make sense to me, but we'll find out, we'll look into that and see. You'd think there'd be some people who'd been there for a couple of months until COVID hit, obviously, but we'll dig into that when we do the audit, but this is based just on the numbers the clerk gave me. There was once again a coding error in the road and bridge fund, so it looked like you had only spent six hundred thousand in that fund, when you actually spent nine hundred thousand. Road and bridge sales tax, road and bridge sales tax.
Right.
So, um, we'll try to get that right in twenty twenty-one.
And if you run a cash report, which I did yesterday, you'll see that, that, that nine hundred thousand dollars was spent.
So.
And also, the, just looking at the cash report, there was like fifty-seven thousand dollars still in that account, but you still have another month.
You have another month, yeah. So we'll have to transfer some money out of this sales tax over to road and bridge fund to, um, cover up. Right now, you've only transferred three hundred thousand. We had budgeted three ninety.
Right.
And you may transfer a little more. I, I think you'd be short in the road and bridge, so you may have, if you can find the applicable expenses, transferring a little more.
Right.
But, um.
So let me ask you, I know that we have a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars in the, um, equipment fund? Can that, some of that money be used?
Yeah, absolutely, for equipment, yeah. Is that the special machinery fund?
Special machinery.
Yeah, yeah.
I have, I think there're probably going to be a little earmarked in that.
That'd be fine, yeah, you can do that.
Something else. So probably about seventy-five thousand.
Yeah. If you remember, um, it's really tough, the, um, road and bridge fund started twenty twenty in negative, you know, because last year we were.
Hundred eighty-four thousand dollars.
And so you had to start off the year, neck, cutting your budget by a hundred eighty-four thousand, so if we can make the budget this year, that'll be really good. Um, I think we might still be short, but if we can prove some of the special machinery and maybe some road and.
I think so, and, you know, I think special bridge, because it's going to have some left over.
Yeah.
But, uh, and I also picked up, you know, I remember that thirty-three thousand, we were short in, in cash on, I think it was the special bridge, or, no, one of, bridging COVID, I do believe. Can't remember which one, I think that's, then that's been taken care of also. So we're in good shape on that.
So I think we're going to make it this year. That's good.
Good.
But we will need to publish, I'll need you today to approve publication of your amended budget. The only thing I'm going to change, I'm going to add the Sparks fund on here, and I need to get the dollar amount.
Okay, we can do that.
But I'm proving, we'll get it to the paper.
Yeah, Judy's here, we can get that from her pretty quickly.
And we'll get her, get her published and have a public hearing on the twenty-second.
I hear, hear a motion to approve the amended budget, twenty, twenty amended budget?
Make a motion to approve the amended twenty twenty budget.
Here, second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion carries.
All right, gentlemen, thank you very much.
Thank you, Jerry.
Have a good meeting.
Yep.
We'll see you later.
Yeah, got a little time to take a short file.
You see where I was talking about?
Yes.
It's not to me personally, I just know the.
Right.
Good morning, Sheriff.
Hey, Mr. Martin. Martin, Sheriff.
Morning. Um, I'm here today, I just wanted to give a shout out to, uh, that, you know, it's highly appreciated that, uh, after seven years, Bobby, I do have permission, which is in the newspaper anyways, that, uh, the major of the jail, Bobby Reed, and the captain, Alvin Metcalf, got well-deserved pay raises after seven years of not receiving anything. That's great, and I really do appreciate it, and so do they. But with that pay raise, uh, my number three guy, which is Bobby, is making more than my number two guy, the undersheriff. And so we're just kind of scratching our heads, you know, where's that conversation at when your number three guy is making more than your number two guy? So I kind of did some, this kind of goes back to a request back in twenty seventeen to open up a dialogue or a line of communication. Here next month, we're going to have new commissioners sworn in, and I'm going to offer this again, and there's nothing that has changed in the laws in regards to elected officials, county commissioners, talking to another county official, either the treasurer's office, uh, registered deeds, the clerk's office, or my office, one-on-one, as long as there's not a form. So, this all occurred back in twenty seventeen, when we had this discussion. Matter of fact, it was July of twenty seventeen, according to the newspaper that did the report on this, and also several other recordings that I had. Uh, at that time, your county counselor, Meeks, attended the meeting Tuesday, and he said Martin is not to meet with any commissioners outside of the commission meeting room. They cannot conduct business without the permission from other commissioners, Meek said. Now, I'm going to get to this here in a second, as to the reason why. So I thought that was kind of odd. So anyways, that same year, twenty seventeen, I reached out to the insurance company who provides the attorneys and stuff for the county. And at that time, commenting in an email was that a sheriff, can a sheriff speak with the county commissioner outside the board meeting? Question mark. And that question is absolutely. However, should the sheriff present information to influence the decision of the county commissioner during such meetings? Absolutely not. So that is kind of, we will present, but we can't.
Sorry, Sheriff, could you say that one more time?
Yep. Can a sheriff speak with the county commissioner outside the board meeting? Question mark. Okay? Absolutely. However, should the sheriff present information to influence the decision of the county commissioner during such meetings? So I.
And that's, and that's an absolute no, correct?
That's, yeah.
Absolutely not, but, but, but listen.
That is.
Certainly, if you're meaning to influence a commissioner about a vote or something that's happening with commission meetings, I would say the commission should not meet with the sheriff on that level, but if he wants to have lunch or talk about his family or interact with a commissioner outside of the commission, I mean, absolutely, they're not allowed to do that.
How about gathering information? Not, not influencing, but asking specifically for information.
Are you doing that as a commissioner?
Yes.
Let me move forward with this, let me move forward with this, okay? Let me move forward with this. Because of what you're saying, that means almost every sheriff in the state of Kansas, along with their commissioners, are violating rules. So here, so, earlier this week, back in July twenty seventeen, I sent out an email. And that email reads, earlier this week, I attempted to meet with a one county commissioner to discuss any issues with a project that this office and the county is involved in. I was informed by the commissioner that she or he. I was informed by the commissioner that she or he could not meet with me outside of the scheduled meeting time that was set by the commissioners." Does anyone know of any violations that A...
Hang on for just a second. I thought this was, was discussing salaries.
It is, and I'm gonna get to that point. I'm gonna get to that point, it's gonna come back around, it's gonna come back around.
This is not relevant to salaries.
It's gonna come back around, just wait.
We don't need...
So does...
Did you send the, did you send the email to all the commissioners?
No, this is to the sheriffs.
Did you send it, oh, this is to the sheriffs?
Yes, yes, yes. So, does anyone know of any individuals that one county commissioners cannot meet with another county elected official, not a commissioner, to discuss any issues with that elected official office? I know that depending on the number of county, or depending on the number of county board members, that a certain number of county commissioners cannot talk business outside of the time. We have three commissioners. So, that was, that was kind of interesting. And it goes on, "One commissioner's thumbs up, two or three commissioners, thumbs two." So this is outside, this is if you decide to come down and, uh, and speak. Another commissioner says, "Yeah, one can talk about anything and tell you anything they want, but you cannot talk with more than that at the same time, more than two probably. I find myself traveling to each of their houses to discuss issues and get at least two on my side." I'm not traveling to your houses, your time is on your time, okay? I'm not traveling to your houses. And, uh, this one's kind of interesting, and I got about four or five examples, and I have them lined in, and I'll get back to it. Sounds like to me, they just don't wanna talk to you. That's from a sheriff. "My commissioners occasionally stop by the office or call if they have questions. Almost always, one-on-one, but since we have a five-commission board, it's not an issue to have a discussion with two presidents. If they can't talk, if they can't talk with you, how will they ever learn the details of your issues?" That's from another sheriff. "Like everyone else seems to be saying, I meet regularly with one or two commissioners. This sheriff has five. This happens at their request and at my request."
I'm still curious where we are on the salary.
Okay, I'm just saying.
We're getting a lesson on meeting with commissioners, and I know this is up to what Mr. Meeks has told us in the past, and we have just followed his advice, and I, I know for a fact that we were told specifically that we are no longer representing the county once we step outside these doors, unless we have specific approval from the other commissioners.
I'll say again, I've said it before, you can talk to anybody you want outside of this commission room, as long as you're not pretending yourself as a county commissioner. Without the other commissioners knowing that you've gone in and talked to somebody, you're breaking the trust of, in my opinion, you're breaking the trust of the commission. And Mr., the sheriff just admitted that there's a county out there that's just committed a coma violation by having a conversation with two separate commissioners about the same topic. You just read it from an email, that's a coma violation, it's called a string meeting, and you can't do it, it's a violation.
There were two commissioners.
If he goes, he goes to Fisher and says, "Hey Fisher, I wanna give you some information about A", and then goes to Lynn and gives commissioner U, commissioner about A, that's a string meeting, it's against the rules, can't do it. Now, Fisher can go to the sheriff all day long and go, "Hey, I need to know about X, Y, and Z." As a citizen, he can do that, I actually inform our new commissioner, he can go out and act as a private citizen all day long. But the minute he acts as a commissioner and starts doing commission business without talking to you guys, that's, that's a problem.
And we're always asking for permission to talk to somebody.
As a commissioner, you could talk to him all day long as a private citizen. If you wanna knock on his door and go, "I've got a question about X, Y, and Z", you're fine, but he just admitted on the record that there's a county out there that's committed a coma violation by having a string meeting, it's called a string meeting, you can't do it. The city of Fort Scott right now is catching a lot of heat because that's what they're thinking's happening. I would appreciate a heads up sometimes, too, but if you go to both sides.
Right, and you know, we were, we were just led to believe this was a progressive salary.
Let me end this with this. It sounds like a policy, it sounds like a local policy or protocol that your commissioners have implemented...
It's in the book.
Can I, can I finish, please? Thank you. Have them familiar or agree to... And, and this is from another sheriff, they really got some real trust issues, and that was from this year, when I followed up on this. So what I'm reaching out to, and it goes right back to the beginning of the statement, that I said, you know, we appreciate the raises that Bobby got, but now my number-three is getting more than my number-two. But I have fell back on other sheriffs throughout the state of Kansas who have said, "Yeah, I've talked to our county commissioners one-on-one about issues so that they can understand." And then here's, here's an example. "I have three commissioners, and I usually direct my issues or concerns to the commission chairman. It is a common practice to have good rapport with your commission, and I know ours appreciate being kept in the loop on areas of concerns. The only time a person could run in trouble is speaking with two at the same time about county business, as this would represent a quorum." This is what I have always been told, and that's from another sheriff. So you're gonna tell me that all these sheriffs that responded back to my email have all violated, along with their county commissioners, a coma, all we were asking, and now I'm reaching out, and you guys make that decision, what you're gonna do. Because, you know, like the one sheriff, is it a trust issue among the three commissioners? I don't know, but I'm, we have new commissioners coming in, and this could have addressed that issue in regards to the pay. Because like I said, my number-two guy now is making less than my number-three guy.
Are you asking for salary increase, or what?
So if that discussion would've came and said, "Hey sheriff, we need to talk to you about something, I'd like to meet with you", then we could've gone over the salary and said, "Well, let's look at this." Like I said, I'm not taking away from Bobby, he well-deserved it. Seven years without a pay raise, well-deserved, does a lot. So does my undersheriff, does a lot. So like I said at the beginning, with issues like this, we have a new commission that's gonna be sworn in in January next month. I am reaching out, and I'll take that challenge anytime. Take that challenge. If one of you wants to pick a day during the week and a time just for you and I and my support staff, administration staff, to sit down and say, "Hey sheriff, what's going on? What can we help you with, what issues is there?", just like the one email, have the better understanding as to what's going on? Pick that day and time. We'll be more than happy to sit down with you. So we're reaching out to you and say, "Hey, new, new commission to address some issues, like for pay and stuff like that, but I would really, really trust that, you know, I'm opening the doors."
So what would be wrong with you coming up and publicly just having a meeting and discuss his salary?
Because it gets into a, it gets, here we go, here's the example, right here. It gets into a disagreement and a fight.
Well, it's no disagreement, there's no disagreement there. I think Ben Cole probably doesn't deserve a raise. But come up and talk to us, you know, our doors always open also. I don't have a problem talking to you all. And if I want to talk to you, which I would gladly welcome, I'll ask commissioners if I can have permission, to go out and have a discussion about issues that, that is surrounding our county and, and your organization. I don't have a problem with that at all. But this is an open forum, and I think that, that the raises for, for Ben would be welcome here to be discussed. I really do.
Well, on the way up here, I had, uh, sorry, Leslie, I'm gonna throw you underneath the bus here. There's a former commissioner years ago, Commissioner Houston. Very good man, died unexpectedly of cancer. Leslie brought to my attention that after a commission meeting, he would go to each one of the elected officials' offices and ask those elected officials, "How you doing? Is there something that we can do to help you as a commissioners? Let's sit down and discuss this, correct?" Where is that? Where is that? So I'm asking you, so I'm asking you, I'm opening the door, I'm extending the hand to sit down and go from there.
Let me ask you a question real quick. So are you asking the county councilor to change his advice?
Yes.
Okay. Caston?
Would it be easy for the commission to allow for a person to go in and talk to the sheriff on its own? If other commissioners know that it's occurring, so motion?
So, I'm gonna ask for a motion that I can go speak to.
Well, I, well, I say that each one of you should have due respect so there's no confusion from anybody, as long as it's one-on-one, just like I read about issues and stuff, so...
What I have is a coma violation, but it's called a string meeting. It's like an email or anything else, so, Commissioner Fisher goes in and talks to the sheriff about issue A, and Commissioner Beth goes in and talks to the commissioner or sheriff about the commission, subject day, that's, that's a violation of coma. Because that's a string meeting, you're talking about, you're trying to get a consensus before you go into a room to get a vote.
So, to set the list...
Here, let's fix this.
The sheriffs say it's not a frequent occurrence that any of the commission goes out there and has a discussion about anything.
As a private citizen, the commission can go out there and meet all day long and have a private discussion with the sheriff. But if the sheriff is trying to influence or trying to talk policy to a commissioner without the other commissioners knowing it, that's bad policy. I'm not saying it's the law, it's bad policy. The law says if the two commissioners are talked to by the sheriff outside the commission room about the same topic to try to get consensus, that's a coma violation. So if he would've talked to Commissioner A and Commissioner B about a raise for a person, that's a violation, that's a coma violation, and we would get reported, and we would lose on that.
But you mentioned policy and law, and law supersedes policy.
The law supersedes, I don't want a coma violation, I mean, policy, you guys, you know, you're right.
But here, you know, you could take this as homework, you can do whatever. Reach out to the other county commissioners throughout the state of Kansas, just like I did with sheriffs, and, and reach out to a county commissioner. Call a couple of them, say, "Hey..."
This is what I just put on your desk, that we're lying there is perhaps considering putting together an advisory board made up of citizens who could bring back the sheriff's concerns and deliberate with them with not having the possibility of a coma violation. Johnson County does it, Liahawatt County does it, I'm sure there's other counties that do it. And that would, it kind of puts the cart before the horse of what I put before you there, but that's where I was going with it. They have a criminal justice advisory board in Johnson County, they have a jail advisory board in Johnson County. Why couldn't we serve our sheriff the same way, putting together a citizens advisory board to bring back issues to you?
Well, I think also, I think the other part of that is if we give, give some, a commissioner a specific permission to go talk about issues on a specific time, not just an open source, we could do that. But I don't know, how many, how many hours did you spend on just one coma violation?
Hours, days.
Hours, days.
No, I mean, I'm actually, I, I completely understand where Sheriff Martin's coming from, I have no issues with that.
I don't either.
The other, the other commissioners should be made aware that that's happening, and he can have one person, like, if Clifton wants to be that person, he can go and talk to the sheriff with all the issues and then come back and...
And report that. Well, I'm, I'm challenging each commissioner, I'm opening the door for that. Like I said, it's, it's kind of strange that you have all kinds of different commissioners go in and talk.
You read an email that was a coma violation.
He did, right off the, right off the...
For some reason or another, it must be fine, because if it wasn't fine, he wouldn't have sent that back to you.
You cannot talk, you cannot talk to two commissioners about the same topic if you try to influence them, that is a really bad idea, and I don't think...
It's a serial communication.
It's a serial communication, it's a violation.
The duty is, the, the offer is extended and the doors open.
Okay, Sheriff.
Sorry, I tried.
Did he ask for a raise for anybody?
No. No, it wasn't about salaries. Well, it was, for him. But, uh, we, we may know that earlier that once we did the salary ban for the, the captain and the major that, that the other person would be at a lower rate, and I think it's a great idea to go back and address that, and, uh...
But there are other issues that he's said here and said that you all were uninformed on, where I think an advisory board does not have to worry about coma violations, correct? If I'm wrong, Mr. Reynolds, they can discuss those issues with him and bring them back to you as a report. That way, takes the load off you all and puts the... If, if you read the book there, there's a, a lot of success in involving citizens in issues like this to bring back...
And we've experienced that with the sewer district and the lake advisory board, and, and where the citizens kind of pull together and they make their community, and, and they advocate for their community to... You know, they might've had a certain particular issue that they were wanting to solve, or a series of issues that they were wanting to solve, but they were able to affect policy by advocating.
Explore the issue and bring it back to you.
Just, just like what's going on now, you know, just looking back at the past, you know, we've been appointed to go and handle specific issues and we're working on right now, and, and we give permission to, to work through this issue. You know, we got somebody, we got the hospital issue, we appointed someone to work through the hospital issue. So there's no, there's no problem in doing that, but the open door policy, I love it. I'd love to be able to do that, but we were advised early on and, and trained it, we cannot do that.
Well, you can...
I don't know, have you, have you been...
I have, I have no issues, I mean, actually, Sheriff Martin kind of opened it up. I mean, I think it would be a really good, if he's wanting communication with the public or the commissioners, maybe you should open up an advisory board for the sheriff for him to have that community input and to have those people interacting and then bringing those, it's worked really well with the sewer district, the lake board. We had an excellent meeting yesterday, there were lots of good things that were talked about, that advisory board brought the group, you know, the legal questions, and, you know, I was gonna talk to you guys about those next week, my, I mean, with Susan, but it's worked brilliantly with the sewer, with the lake advisory board, I mean, really well.
One of the, one of the comments, or one of the emails that, or one of the, the policies that was, came out there, right off of the, the initial, that it was okay unless you were conducting county business, sewer business.
Can you prove that? No, it's only...
No, but you want transparency.
You want transparency, open forum right here.
We don't want closed doors, I mean, the, the purpose of the way this system is set up is not to have backdoor dealings, you wanna be able to have open, transparent conversations with people, and to be honest, I mean, you have every right as a private citizen to talk to whoever you want, but when you act as a commissioner, you gotta be really careful about how you conduct business, because everybody in this room wants to know what's happening behind the closed doors.
I definitely do not want to go through another coma violation.
But this is the open forum right here.
But, but, never mind.
Go ahead, Ian.
I'm not sure what I even want to say.
Go ahead, go ahead, appreciate your thought.
I know, I know, you'll tell me if I'm wrong, you'll correct me, that's okay. I get, I, I need, first of all, I need clarification on... Are you just talking about elected officials can't...
No, 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 Bill could talk to any elected official that he wants, and these guys can talk to any elected official that they want, but when they start conducting business as a county commissioner...
Okay, I guess I need a picture of what that...
And they don't, well, okay...
So it's called a governing body, that's the governing body.
Clifton, Clifton walks into Shane's or into sheriff's office and says, "Hey Bill, I've got a really problem with X, Y, and Z. As a commissioner, I'm coming here and asking X, Y, and Z. Commissioner Fisher and Commissioner O'Hare don't know that you've done that, and so he's trying to get information from the sheriff."
But, but, what about with me, going to Bill?
You have every right to.
No, there's no issues with that at all. And really, Clifton, as a private citizen, has no issues going there, but the minute he says, "I'm coming here as a commissioner and conducting business..."
Ian, if you wanted to go talk to Sheriff Martin about specific issues that, that was of interest to, to you, and come back and, and talk to the commission, you could do it all day long.
All day long, absolutely.
And I will give you that...
It gets sticky, or when it's elected officials acting...
These guys, these guys, they may leave that room, they're not commissioners anymore.
Let me give you an example, we...
And start talking to, you know, if you were reporting that these two are talking in the community, well, I could, I could be the middle man and talk to Sheriff Fisher about the same thing, and then let him go leave the room, and then I could go and talk to Clifton about the same thing. And that, that would, that'd be a violation, because that's a string meeting. And you don't want that as a private citizen, you wanna be able to know...
That includes, that includes the county clerk, if I'm talking to county clerk, she can't, she can't pick up the phone and tell the, another commissioner our conversation, you know, or, she, she's the catch-all.
And I figure, I, I, I'm very, I'm very uncomfortable doing that. I, I don't wanna talk, like, if I get a phone call from a commissioner wanting to talk about the same thing, I'll talk to Beth, put them out there.
And he's always doing that, can't talk to you.
Because I know that, I don't wanna create any, you know, coma issues. I mean, I can't even talk to them about the same topic, because I believe so hardly in it. Unless it's in this room.
So, so, and, and let me give you an example that might help kind of sort things out. Every once in a while, I will call Eric Bailey and report a problem, okay? However, if I direct him to do, to perform work, I've overstepped that, that line. Okay, because I have pressured him...
Let me, let me, let me clarify just a little bit on that. So somebody calls me up and gives me, gives me a road issue report. I call Eric Bailey and I says, "Hey, I got this report about this road. I can't say go fix it, all I can say is I got this report." I can't tell Eric what to do whatsoever.
And so that, that's kind of the, the, the fine line in, in, I would say, the everyday application. We probably get a couple reports of road situations that have to be reported as road situations, but telling him how to do his job outside of this room is, is probably a coma.
Going back to part of this question... Going back to part of this question. Never mind.
So, 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 Anne, I, I understand, this is, this is a, you know, I, I will say that historically, I think that when his under sheriff, who was, was he a salary person?
No.
Hourly.
Hourly person, but, but I think there was a period where his number two guy was paid less than the number one guy.
He was.
And, and, you know, that didn't get corrected till a year or two, two years later, because, yes, it was two years later, because we did hourly back in 2017, and 2019, we did.
And we know, we had, we had the, we had the, the person running the organization was making it less with overtime than some of his people, you know, we had, we had to really reg.
I want to, I want to.
Go ahead, go ahead, go ahead.
I mean, I, I know, the frustration level with Sheriff Martin on this, I get on some levels because he, you know, everybody wants to have conversations prior to, we've worked really hard not to, not to have that occur on some levels because of just camaraderie and good business, good businessship between the commissioners, but you can absolutely give Clifton the ability to talk to the sheriff all day long about commission issues if the motion is passed by the commission. Clifton could be, just like we have with the hospital, just like we have with.
Ambulance.
Everything, yes.
And then Clifton can go and talk to him, every day, every week, have a weekly meeting, a biweekly meeting, whatever they want, and he can act as a commissioner and come back and tell the commission, hey, here's the problem, here's what we need to work on.
You bet.
He can't take action.
Here's how, he can't take any action at all, but he can act as a commissioner and get that information. Now, my problem is when he meets with two of them, that's where I get nervous.
Well, then you have a forum.
And then what stops, and this, this is just down the road, what stops the new commission from saying, well, I'm going to go talk to the sheriff, or I'm going to go talk to the sheriff, I'm going to talk, so all three commissioners go and talk to the sheriff, like this open door policy that he asked for, and you accidentally talk about the same thing?
Then you take a straight, a serial conversation with a forum.
Right.
And that's, you know, and that's.
That's a super no-no.
And I, I know it's frustrating.
Our form of government.
It is, it is frustrating.
Sometimes it doesn't work very well.
You know, and I, you know, the, just, just like, just like.
Do you all around that?
Yeah, well, just like the commission meetings, they've changed dramatically in the last seven, six years, I mean dramatically.
When I first started here, it was an open forum, people came in, they talked, we sat.
And the open door policy basically went away.
We talked for hours about really important things that were really pertinent, and then by the, now it's so structured that we lost that.
It is.
I think it's a wonderful form of government.
And I've, I've publicly stated that I miss having the open discussions, and I do, and I, you know, I'd love to go in and just have chit chats all the time, you know, but I have to be directed.
Why does the sheriff have a place on the agenda every week, or every other week? Where you could just come in and talk, and you're all here.
He could.
If he wants to talk about a salary, you go into executive session.
Well, he, actually, salaries would not be executive session unless it was identified or not, like, if he can talk.
Were any of those guys out there?
And they were talking about elected non-official, or not elected officials today.
You can't go into executive session, you have to talk about employee A or B, you know, and it's talked.
So those guys are considered elected?
You can, you can talk about, you can talk about positions, but you're not supposed to talk about personnel.
He did mention.
Well, he did, but it's public record.
It is.
His salaries.
Yep.
If he's talking about his performance, then he absolutely has to go into executive session.
So we got.
That's a personal matter.
I like the idea, the best idea I've heard so far is the citizens committee.
So, Clifton, and now you got to leg up before you go, you're training in January.
If he, if he had it, he doesn't.
Yeah, okay, yeah, but they might zoom it.
Sorry, my card's out before my force, but that was to lead you in.
If you guys can make a motion to have one of the commissioners know and talk to the sheriff, and so then, then the other commissioners know that that commissioner's talking to that.
That, again, and then I'm, I'm fine with it, I think we should. If, if another commissioner wants to go talk to sheriff, we're going to have to send this one, and.
Well, that, that, well, let's, let's talk about that for a minute, and one, I think that, I think that the commissioner can go in as a private citizen and have a conversation with the sheriff about.
Yes.
You know, who got arrested, why that person got arrested, you know, what's your policy on pulling people over for speeding tickets, and, you know, but the minute you go, hey, why are you spending money?
How come you're not getting raises?
Right.
Or what do you need for raises?
And you have a designated commission.
So, I, I would ask for a motion to allow me to go speak with Sheriff Martin.
For indefinite period of time?
Do you want to be the liaison?
You want to be the liaison?
I move that we authorize.
Hang on, hang on.
For an indefinite period of time until I see otherwise.
Can you be said, you're on motion?
I move that we give Clifton Beth the authority to carry conversations on with the sheriff's department and the corrections facility to better understand their needs.
I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All favor.
Aye.
Aye. All ayes. What?
So, can he just talk to the sheriff, or can Bobby be in that conversation?
Boy, if Bobby's not elected official, they can talk to Bobby all day long.
Every deputy, every deputy in the room, every deputy that works with the sheriff can be in that meeting.
Yeah, he can talk to anybody. We're only, we're only looking at the, the elected official.
That's a good question, because I wouldn't have known that.
He, he could, he's gonna, he's been given authority, just like with the hospital and anything else, he's given authority to conduct, not take any action, but to actually talk about county issues with the sheriff, but.
So, three of them over there wanting to get together and talk to Clifton, and that's okay?
Talk to anybody, well.
It could be for him to come back and give a report.
He should.
And he can come back and.
Well, but, and that's what I was telling you, that's why I was having the screen line, sheriff is, is what, so let's say Clifton goes and has that conversation, doesn't tell the other commissioners, it's not against the law, it's not against the rules, but it's bad policy, because he, but these two are like, what is he talking to them about?
Don't you dare go talk to them.
Why are you having secret meetings with the sheriff? What are you doing behind their backs? Why are you having, that's, that's why you don't want that, that's why I said that, I never said it is the law, I said it's not, it's bad policy, I remember that, we talked about some policy issue, not the law. I can't stop, I've said this to these guys, I can't stop who they talk to outside of this meeting, like, whenever they leave this room, they can talk to anybody they want, except each other about county.
And don't take a forum with you.
Right, but you can't, you're permission, you can do that, you can go to KAC and, you know, go out and take a tour of the.
In a serial conversation, don't take a forum with you.
No, you can't do that. That's what, when the sheriff said that, you can't do that.
You ready, Ms. Dare?
I don't know, this might be chapter two.
Hang on, hang on.
Oh, yeah.
If she cares.
This might be cha, chapter two of the same conversation, I don't know, and then after sitting here today, I wondered, maybe I should just wait, but we'll just, we'll just forge ahead, I'm trying to learn and ask questions, and, here, give that one a bit, um, thanks. Okay, I'll just start in, and especially after the conversation with the rock crusher falling apart and landfill and jail revenues down, I'm, I'm, you know, I have a particular direction I want this to kind of go, and I don't know if it'll go there or not, we'll see. So, here this morning to ask questions about Bedco, coupled with a conversation about hiring someone that would be an overseer for the county that occurred on December 1st. I believe the statement made was someone that knows the condition of our flocks. On November 10th, Greg Motley met with the commission to request $130,000 to help establish Bedco. After talking, he told me that a budget was submitted outlining the use of the monies. And, so how detailed is that budget, or does it communicate in general terms? As far as I know, that budget wasn't shared with the public, so let this stand as my formal request for that budget. At that meeting, Clifton Beth was given permission to talk to.
So, Anne, on the budget, on the budget part of that, did you ask Greg for a copy?
No, I did not, I'm sorry.
That's fine.
If you want me to do that, I'll, I'll do it that way, if that's.
He probably.
He probably has it, because I've not seen it, and so there's some question, anyway, I'll get to it. And then, Clifton, you gave permission for him to speak to Greg Motley, so now we go back to, did Clifton really ha, never mind, we won't go down that road. Um, well, we will later, but anyway, so then on November 17th, the commission passed a motion to give $130,000 to Bedco, and then I will note, there was no discussion on what, where this money was going to be going and what it was for. On December 1st, Justin led a discussion about hiring someone to oversee some duties to include, from what I understood, who has experience in HR management business and accounting abilities, that that definition wasn't nailed down. From that conversation, it seems to make sense that the county should hire someone that has their finger on the pulse of the different county entities in order to have a point person that the different department heads could go to to get answers to a variety of questions. However, in an article in the Tribune dated November 17th, 2017, it's interesting how so many things have happened in 2017, it states, "As county counselor Meeks assists the county commissioners but will have other duties such as HR, interdevelopmental work, and economic development," O'Hara told the Tribune, end quote. "I would propose that if the county counselor's job has grown to the extent that Mr. Meeks cannot handle these, and he's already expressed that they're, they're just a lot, that with his current load," wait a minute, let me back up, "has grown to the extent that Mr. Meeks cannot handle all these responsibilities with his current load, as he has communicated in previous meetings, that the commissioners consider turning the job of county counselor into a full-time job with these other responsibilities being added." I do not know if that's feasible or not, I'm just asking the questions. So where does the money come from for this added person, and that was talked about a little bit? In some conversations I've had with others, a county employee's name has come up, and so is that the plan, that this county employee would be hired as the Bedco director, or whatever they would call this person? And if the city has to buy into this, wouldn't that leave at least one person out of a job, if not two, on the city side? And that seems to be a big ask for the city. So the county is possibly committed to something that might cost more in the long run. If this county person is hired in some capacity with Bedco, then I understand that there would possibly be money available to hire another person. However, if at least part of these duties were to be a part of Mr. Meeks' contract, what has happened that he can no longer fulfill these duties? I'm concerned about the taxpayers' money being spent in a prudent manner. And so, was the money given on the condition that it would be given when the city also agreed to this arrangement, or has, like, the check already been written and given?
So, I thought we had a discussion with Greg, Mr. Motley, on the, on the Bedco structure?
Okay.
Did you?
Oh, no, 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 sorry, I did not.
He, he, Greg informed me that he had had a discussion with you.
Oh, it was like this long.
I'm acting only, I'm only acting only as, as the appointed person to the Bedco board. Bedco, Bedco is not a, a county organization.
I understand that.
Okay, this is something that's been in the works, and are you familiar with Allen County Thrive?
Only a little.
Okay, Allen County Thrive was set up years ago to, to be the economic development arm for, for Allen County. Allen County originally was funded by the county, Allen County, and within maybe two to three years, the contribution that the county was, was giving to Allen County Thrive went down significantly. They are basically, and they only started out with one position, and they, they've now expanded to have more than a few positions, and they're almost totally funded by grants.
Okay.
And, and they are the economic, and if you look at what has went on in Allen County as far as, as their development, they have, they have, they are a 501(c)(3), able to get a lot more grants than any government entity could ever get, and they've used it to, to improve a lot of their infrastructure, and also they were instrumental in bringing peerless to Allen County. So, so they're a very valuable asset. We're, and they have, Graceley stepped up to, to come over and help Bedco through the process of setting up. Right now, I know from being a board member, we're going through developing the, the criteria for job applications. These, these job applications will be submitted to various sites, you know, in the, the business community, and we're looking for someone that has the experience, grant writing ability, and et cetera, et cetera. The, the money right now, if you look at it, from what we're paying, there's $100,000 that is in the budget now for, for economic development, plus the benefits. So that's another additional, what, 20 grand or so, so we're not really funding that. Everyone's going to have the opportunity to apply for that job that is interested in it, okay?
Okay.
Uh, the, the, so, two different, two different subjects in this presentation.
Yes, there are.
The other one is, the other one is responsibility of Mr. Meeks. If you look at his contract, his contract is specifically for the county counselor, and it's a part-time contract, he's, he's just basically being a concerned citizen and, and knows what the workload is in Bourbon County, has stepped up to handle a lot of the issues internally on HR and, and things like that, and his goal is to see Bourbon County succeed. Well, we're to, we're to the point now that, that we've changed our organization enough that we're doing a lot different things than we used to, ambulance service, talking about the, the emergency room, you know, on and on and on, it's just continual progression of what we're doing. When we were talking about a business manager type affair, we're looking at someone that can handle the business aspect and start handling a lot of these internal things, and our, our thought process and going back and look at the data, by, by having someone in that position, this is strictly nothing but discussion at the present, we, we, we know that we could probably save enough money to pay for that position.
Okay, okay, I mean, and you had, you had mentioned that last, last week, I guess it was.
One more, one more bit on that, if we was to make Justin a full-time employee, he's now probably working anywhere from, from 35 to 50 hours a week. His contract is for, I think, 15 hours a week, he does not charge for those extra hours whatsoever. If we went into that and you look at what county counselors, or what counselors for cities and places like that are, are getting, some places are getting $175 an hour. Justin's rate right now, if he started charging by an hour, would be $100 an hour.
Okay, I guess that wasn't made clear at budget time then, because he, he made a presentation about the budget and, and, and the raise he was asking for or wanted, and then I remember him talking about, because at that time, he would be into comp time now, and so I was under the assumption that you were paying him because of that.
No.
I, I didn't, I, I.
No, I, I. How many, how many, how many days you taken off?
I, I was actually going to take off, this year I've only done one Tuesday where I've taken off, I missed one meeting because I was sick. I am, actually, I want to talk, I really want to talk about this because it's come up, I, the question came up on Sunday about this relationship I have with the commission. I'm county counselor, and I, I, I know there's been tension with that job function, you know, this has been a very stressful year for everybody, COVID, you know, the hospitals, EMS, on and on, as county counselor, I would never be involved, I mean, Jody did an excellent job with EMS, but I helped a lot with the budgets because Jody and I both have MBAs, so we have another set, a skill set that has become valuable on some levels to the, to the commission. Well, her and I, we work additional hours that are outside of our functions because the way we have to work in Bourbon County with, we're multiple hats, because we don't have that person involved in that function. So, I volunteer my time basically, because I want Bourbon County to succeed, I love, I love to live here, I want my son to live here, I mean, I have other reasons why I'm doing this, just because I want to be here. I don't care, I mean, I care about the money because I got to pay my bills, but I don't care about the money because I'm doing what I'm doing. And so what I've done is I took a huge step back, because I see the organization changing, there's a huge change coming in 2021, and I don't have the skill set for it, I don't have, plus I don't have the time to go in and analyze all the budgets like I did. In 16 and 17, I spent a lot of time with Commissioner O'Hara working on budgets, and it sucked up a lot of time, well, I got, I got student loans I got to pay, I got kids to raise, you know, I, so I've got things I got to do that, you know, and not to say there's other organizations within our own county that, that attorneys pay differently, and so I'm still going to have a salary, well, I'm actually not, I'm going to be 1099, 40, but I'm actually, and people can disagree with this all day long, but I'm actually saving the county money again by doing what I'm doing. I'm doing. So, I'm gonna be twenty hours a week, seventy-five dollars an hour, and after I go over twenty hours, I'm gonna bill a hundred. But I'm not the person that's sitting there and billing for phone calls and text messages, and, you know, I'm not doing that. And I'm not getting credit for that. It's starting to get a little frustrating because people in the community don't realize what I've done.
Well, and, and that's, and again, that, that goes back to communication, which I've harped on from day one.
Yeah, well, I think, I think I did a pretty good job communicating that. And then the other part of this is the tax sale. So, another county that's really close to us, they pay eighty-five dollars a parcel for, to the lawyer for the tax sale. And we used to pay eighty-five dollars a parcel. I took that on because, one, there was, I was really excited about the land bank, and two, I was trying to save the county money again. But this time around, because the land bank didn't quite work the way we thought it was gonna work, the parcels this time around are huge. And so I asked for that twelve thousand for whoever wants to do it, to pay for legal help, you know, like a paralegal, and then also the time on tax for the lawyer, because it's not possible for not to compensate for the amount of work that's gonna be there. And that's very transparent.
Yes, and you've talked about that on numerous occasions, and I understand that totally, you know, I, I, yeah.
I don't think people realize, and I'm not, this isn't a horn-tuning thing, Fisher did a good job of this once. I don't bill by, this was asked me on Sunday, I am not billing any hours or getting any additional pay except for my salary from, from the Bourbon County Commissioners.
Okay.
And my salary is sixty-four thousand with benefits. And I've, I've received some additional income from working for the county attorney's office when I filled in for, when they didn't have prosecutors, but that's uneven enough to get the ten ninety-nine. So that's only compensation that I've had, and my private practice has not been zealously worked on because I don't have time to do it. So really, what I'm doing is I'm taking away money from my private practice and applying it to the county, and I'm doing that free will. I'm not being forced. But there are things that cannot get done here without Jody and myself and other people like Shane Walker that work multiple hats. I mean, she retired as the economic development director and started working hospital stuff the first day she came on board.
That was 2018. And some of these references, it was 2017 before we had an economic development director.
Okay.
And, and, and I would say that, that Justin had to-
Poor Jody, I was doing some of her job too. That's why I begged for her to come on because we needed it.
And at, at, some of the projects that I remember that you were working on, just tying off with the Pizzone's up in industrial hemp opportunities.
Right. Spent a lot of time on, spent a lot of time on working with a couple of business owners in our community on hemp. We spent a lot of time on just what it looked like, you know, what we've spent time with, I mean, it just goes on and on. I mean, it's just NRP. The NRP, I, I mean, without Jody, this is true, thank you, Jody, without, I started the NRP program, without Jody that never would've gotten done.
See, what's the NRP program?
It was six months.
The utilization program, it's a kind of a rebate for increases in property taxes created by new construction, essentially.
And it's being used heavily. It's really, it's really done really amazing things for our county.
Yeah.
The purpose is to increase our value so that we can lower our tell, our property taxes.
That's correct.
It has been shown to be used as a good tool throughout the implementation.
And the city has had a program like this in place for a number of years, maybe twenty, twenty-five years, and, and having a county-wide program to level the playing field is, I feel, a step in the right direction.
Justin started all the paperwork with it and started the conversation and the nor is considerable more work on gathering the-
You had to go to each-
.........
You had to go to each entity and get their buy-in to, to allow that.
Yeah, at that same time, we're working on the land bank, and we're trying to get that started. And there's just things that, obviously, I don't come in and give reports because I don't, I'm not that kind of person. Jody and I are not, we don't chewed our horns. We just do our work. We, we see the job and we get it done. And people don't know what's happening because, one, all the different HR stuff that happens in the background, we can't talk about it except for executive session. We're not talking about elected officials or big concept things. We do that in open session like we did last week. We're talking about specific people in executive session and who, there's nobody in our organization right now that does that HR stuff. So it falls-
Yeah, I'm not, yeah, I'm not faulting the need.
Right. But it falls on, there's only certain people that can fall on, and we only have people that are able to do that.
And the issue with Justin doing that is he can only talk to the commissioners.
Right.
So, so if you look, if you look at just the timeline, October 2018, we, we did an economic development. So, and then, and we spent the first six months.
Oh, yes.
Six months.
Yes.
And for, for EMS.
I remember.
You know, trying to get that.
Yes, I remember.
And then, we spent a lot of time just for emergency rooms, staying, and what is going on in the community with healthcare. That's an ongoing discussion and workload. It just continues.
Yeah, I understand, I understand.
And, and this is really, something really interesting that the community doesn't really know because there was so much backwork done. Jody and I and Commissioner Fisher, we, we looked at every option on the planet that came to EMS services. We, one, we didn't wanna reinvent the wheel, but two, we had to find out what was the best practice. And you can't just Google that and go, oh, what's the best practice for EMS, because it doesn't exist, honestly, because there's not very many hospitals that close on a Monday or night. So, you know, we had a lot of work to do, and we had to figure out, were we gonna fund it, were we gonna warrant it? I mean, the relationship with the city and how this worked out, it just didn't happen overnight. It just didn't-
Oh, no, I totally understand that. And so-
Hundreds of hours.
So, there, again, there's, there's, obviously, you know and understand that there's still a disconnect when it comes to what does happen and, and what is ongoing, and, and the community and what the community knows. I mean, I've, I've attempted poorly at times to answer some of what's happening, and they all, especially during turbine time, and they freak out every time you went into executive session. I said, no, hospitals going on too. You can't just-
But see, like, you know, it's, it's actually like my profession and circumstantial evidence. Like, you know, there's snow on the ground, and there's bunny tracks into the, into a hole. Is there a bunny in that hole? Well, there probably is. We wanna make sure in our former government that it's transparent we find that bunny, but to get to a lot of these places, we can't show you where the bunny went because that's all privileged. It's either, it's either proprietary-
Okay.
Or we sign a nondisclosure. We have an MOU that we have to look at. I mean, there's lots of things we can't do because these other parties are pretty pressured on us not to give up information that we can't legally give up.
Okay.
And we absolutely can't talk about people in public that are employees that are not elected because they can sue us.
Mm-hmm, okay.
And that's why it's frustrating at times.
Well, yeah, it is. And so that's why I, 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 I'm, I'm, yeah. I don't mean to make all my learning times to be like this, you know?
No, that's what we want. That's-
I do, you know, ask other people and, and what's going on and what, you know.
I would love, I would love to get one seventy-five an hour.
I'm afraid that you're being caught in the swirl of the city, and that's not fair.
So anyway, Clifton, you met with Mr Motley about Bedco? Was, is there anything more than what's already been said that you wanna share?
I did not meet with him.
Oh, you have not done that?
I spoke with him.
Oh, okay, okay.
A limited amount of time on the phone and, and kind of the same thing you're asking, you know, a timeframe, a budget and those types of things. And that was a week, last week, and they were meeting on Thursday to, to get that. And, and obviously, I voted yes. I do believe in the program.
Oh, yeah, I don't have a problem with the program. It, it just, for me, everything always goes back to money.
And I want to know that it is, my vote's good for a year.
Yeah, yeah.
And that's it.
Yeah.
And, and I'll actually watch this particular program like a hussle.
Okay.
And I mean, that's basically what I thought. He didn't give me any other information.
Okay, okay, that's fine. So, yeah, I-
The other part, the other part of Bedco is, it's an eleven-member board.
It's a what?
Eleven-member board.
Has eleven, okay. I thought I heard fourteen at one time.
Maybe even more. We got, we got an enlarged, but all the cities and the schools and the colleges are all represented.
Okay.
So, and the commission.
City and schools, okay. I knew there were-
And enlarged.
Yeah. Okay, you know, I, I, I don't have a problem with, yeah, go ahead, sorry.
I think you had a question here. Can the county really afford to give a hundred and thirty thousand dollars to Bedco? You know, we've done a lot of benchmarking, and I would say that Allen County probably funds Thrive to the, to the tune of a hundred and fifty thousand.
Still?
They're-
Does that mean still?
From, from memory. Now, sometimes my memory isn't quite-
When it, when it began, to get it off the ground.
But, but we do a fairly good look at how we stack up with other counties.
Yes.
And when you start looking at how much, if they fund any economic development and how much they fund economic development, and then you look at that county, it's pretty evident of the, of the counties that have not placed that as a priority.
Uh, yeah, I would agree. I would agree. I, I don't have a problem with the, with the program and what it, what it is designed to do. I, I, there again, I, you know, we all know our federal government likes to subsidize things, and they subsidize them for forty years, and they still don't make money, you know. So I, I just want you all, my closing statement there is just to carefully consider all your options and make sure you know what the right hand and the left hand are both doing so that we're not still funding a Bedco in five years and, and trying, and, and kinda stuck. I, I hope not.
We've kind of been, well, we have. We've been funding Bedco for, ever since it was established.
Okay.
The county has.
Okay.
It was at forty thousand dollars a year. They reduced it when they bought the, the, went in with the city to purchase the golf course. We haven't established, but, but that's where it should've been, was, was forty thousand. And, and, and its original charter was to do what we're gonna start doing. They didn't have the, the buy-in that we have now. We have a lot of commitment from other organizations that was very serious about it. And they understand that, that we're in a declining population, and we need to do something to turn it around.
Oh, yeah, totally. And Clifton said it best last week. He says, we can keep doing what we're doing and, and not, not grow, not gain, if not retreat, go backwards. And, and it's gonna take some hard things. That night, the city commission had a hard meeting and said basically the same thing. You know, there's some hard decisions that are gonna have to be made, and we're not gonna like them all. So anyway, I commend you. I have nothing on COVID today because this, I, I was not, I'm not ready, other than, there again, just be careful in that arena, that, yeah.
So I can give you a sense for where we are at with COVID.
Oh, okay.
I would say we're still in, in the red. There was little optimism coming off of Thanksgiving, but I don't think it's until like next Tuesday we know the full effect of, of what that, and anyway, the dip kind of has come up.
Yeah, it has, yeah.
According to New York Times, where I get my, my information, really, it's, it's nationwide, hospitalizations are, are high. I don't know if there's capacity.
The, the healthcare system nationwide is on the verge of collapse.
Collapsing. And, 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 and I was on a call on Friday with the, the governor and different speakers, and they're really having a challenge bringing primarily nurses, you know. There was a fellow, the general of the, what is it, the National Guard from Kansas, he was, he was saying they've been asked about deploying, you know, medical providers to the front lines of this, and he says, most of our physicians are already serving, so you're just, you're just taking, taking him out of service and you're reassigning him, so you're not really gaining anything. But, but it is a, it, it is a challenge. And, and, you know, the jury is still, you know, our behaviors really are gonna, are gonna, by in large portion, determine how severe the economic impact of, of the next few months are, are going to mean to, to our community.
Well, we've been saying that for six months. So it gets, and so then people get tired and, and get lazy, or whatever, you know.
And, and the people that are fighting the front lines of this, the health department-
Yeah, oh, yeah.
They're, they're fatigued.
Yeah.
I can, I can, as a nurse, I can tell you that we're getting tired.
Yeah, I have no doubt. I, I have no doubt.
It's just like, I mean, the wildfires out west, you can do it for a couple weeks, but we're going on nine, ten months? And, and now the, the fires seem to be raging. I think we're at eighty cases per hundred thousand in the last week, which is community spread.
Statewide, or what do you, how, how are you relating those numbers?
In our county. You know, I like-
Well, I guess, I guess I would, I would appreciate to see, hearing those numbers a little better, not based-
I think I saw yesterday a hundred and fifty-two.
Yeah, I did see a hundred and fifty-two, but not based on a hundred thousand, because we don't have a hundred thousand people in our county.
Did they close schools down again?
No.
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 High school, middle school down now.
No, they're going.
No, they went back after Thanksgiving.
They're back. I know, I know, two thirty-five, Christian break starts at eighteen.
Two thirty-four is still going?
Yeah, yeah, so-
Yes, sir.
May I make a comment? Comment I'm gonna make is, it's gonna affect us in accounting. Business-wise, and I'm gonna preface this, I read in the newspaper from Iowa that the central printing is going to go out of business because the owner caught COVID, and he was the only one that knew how, and his whole family's a family business, and being he's the only one that knew how to do the press and basically getting into public relations of selling it. So it, it'll close in. We'd have this happen locally, more than likely, books and magazines probably gonna go out because the owner passed away. And so it, it is gonna affect us, and, and it isn't because they didn't have the business, it's because the COVID got the owner for small business.
Hey, you're right.
Yeah, I understand. This is a huge, vast-
That's a dashboard like that, and you get county-level detail. I also-
Okay, yes, please do. Yeah, because I, I've seen several of those different ones, and, and they are very, very fascinating and disturbing all at the same time. But I guess, guess too, that just, the, the, this virus is, is a changing animal all the time, and even from the federal level, seeing what a federal agency says from month to month changes. And so even riding that roller coaster becomes difficult on, on what is, is, is best practices and what we can ignore now or not pay so much attention to. And I understand the hard position that you take. What, you're talking about monthly reports or something? I would have liked to have seen during this time Rebecca Johnson come at least once a month and give a report to the county commission. She, I, I understand, county, that the health department does a, a, a vast myriad of things, but again, I've harped on communication from the first day I got here, and, and it helps me to understand where you all are thinking and, and heading, and I like to think it helps others. It, it might just make others mad, I don't know, but, you know. So, again, we've had, in recent weeks, people here just mad that you didn't, aren't enforcing a mask law on some sort of more intense level. And, and Bill Martin, I appreciate him being here and telling, you know, he, he can't. There's no law. Mandates aren't laws. That's one, just one tiny little thing that people don't seem to understand. Mandates aren't laws. And, for the good or bad of that, you know, I don't, I don't know anymore. But, so tread carefully, that's all I got. So, on that, I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you, Ed.
You're welcome. Thanks, Ed.
Mr Neville.
Hey, David.
Hey. Can I tell you a little story?
Sure.
I was flipping through, I was flipping through my high school, you know, whatever that book is called, yearbook, and I was pointing out to my kids people that they might know, and, and I pointed at Dave Neville, he's in my class. I can tell it. I can tell it. He had a big smile. He had a big smile.
Thank you.
Haven't changed much over the years.
No, probably not.
I, I move that we go in an executive session. Is it timed, ten fifty? Eleven fifty? Yeah. It is timed.
It is.
I move we go in executive session for ten minutes to talk about personnel matters of an individual that's non-elected to protect their privacy.
I'm gonna change the wording. You'll return to this room at eleven twenty-seven.
We will return to this room at eleven twenty-seven.
You guys are leaving now, so you gotta make sure you let everyone know you're going back there.
Oh, that's the important thing, not where we're going.
Right.
Okay.
Where you're coming, where you're going.
Yeah, we're leaving this room, and we'll be back, resume in this, this room at eleven twenty-seven, twenty-eight, by the time we get there.
Eleven twenty-eight.
Second.
I hear second.
Second.
You need a discussion.
Aye, aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Call for motion carries.
I'm so tired of being at the Wilson's.
We're gonna be bothered.
Never. I spent the entire winter where it was old.
And they're gonna call you.
I know. But I said last, the last couple of weeks when it was seventy, I said, I couldn't stay like that. I could live here.
They're forecasting sixty-five soon, so I can deal with it for a little while longer.
Sixty-nine the next couple of days.
Sixty-nine, I'll take that too, yep.
Rain, rain by Friday.
Well, it'll be tight.
And then it's supposed to cool down for a couple days, but they said Miami was supposed to warm back up again in sixty, so it's like, come on. Come on.
Think what we can get because we noticed that we're going to get the cold.
Football game last night was interesting. The San Francisco Forty Niners were playing at a stadium in Arizona.
Yeah.
Where the COVID rate exposure rated higher than it is in San Francisco.
Well, what about Los Angeles? In California, they was talking about two shares. One of Los Angeles County is not going to take and enforce the COVID mandate in California. And, and I mean, even if, even if you have a law, well, I guess Pittsburgh has that thing down there that they, their fine's going to be five hundred dollars. And basically they come in and give you a warning and it's done by the fire department. So they, and they have a nuisance law that they're using to do that. And they, uh, they give you a warning and it gives the business a warning. And then if you don't comply later on, you can be cited. It's not, it's up to the county attorney whether you want to collect that too. The five hundred dollars is what they put in.
If we had a municipal court here.
Yeah.
We could satisfy the sheriff with all the fines. He could give everybody a raise.
Municipal court would solve a lot of problems.
Yeah.
Yeah, but do we really want the sheriff and his deputies running around giving citations?
Yes.
Or not wanting to possibly.
Yes.
I don't know.
We sure do.
I don't know. We gotta turn on them like we got. I don't know.
They have to give themselves one for not wearing masks properly.
You, you have to set the, I've always learned this, I didn't know twenty years ago. When you're in a position and they consider commissioners and elected officials that position you as authority, they have to set the example. You don't set the example, somebody along the line sets the example here. You have to set the tone. And I find it, my, my brother, a medical doctor. And he did not believe in the COVID.
This is where it took four sheriff, uh, sheriff's office, sheriff cars to get moved out of the middle of Emerald Street last night about ten thirty. He just stood, that, I'm in micro truck. I was afraid to move, thinking he would attack my truck. Eight point buck.
Where's Emma?
Up on right here.
Okay, that way.
It's Thirteenth Street, up inside.
It goes up towards Iron Hill.
Yeah.
Yes.
But halfway down the street, he's right under the streetlight.
Who was it?
He just stood there.
Who was it, Michael? Somebody hit it?
No, he stood alive. He just stood there, never moved.
Oh, wow.
Wouldn't they for anyone? That's not what's going to that over on Pyleman and Second Street, right there. It's not like that way, you know. But I would, I would think that that's the same one.
Well, there's a lot of timber up there by across from the middle school. They need to stay up there or down by the railroad tracks. I was afraid to go around it, but I did. He never moved.
Deer are smart. When I had duty down in Fort Collins, they would have open season out in some of the ranges that civilians would come in and hunt deer and stuff. You get a permit to do that. And I was pulling duty and they had this great big green area, five of the barracks out there. And you're in the center of the bay. We talked about deer and this captain was, and he said, I said, "Them deer out there are, are just eating across there. There's housing and stuff all around." And he goes, "I, I, he goes, "That's nothing." He said, "They won't move." And he come out there, he, these were on, on his car at on the torn. They raised their head up and went right back eating. But they were smart enough to come out where he's being shot at, that greens where they can't be shot.
Well, I honked my horn out of the deer.
Oh, no. Somebody hit a big cow out in fifth floor yesterday. He was laying outside the roof. That's a big.
So Jason, Jason, I discovered this graffiti on the Tenth Street Railroad Crosses. So, um, old Travis, he called, they're going to, and they cleaned up on the west side. This remains to this day. So I sent a picture of this to Berkshire Hathaway. I said, "I'll take one share of Berkshire Hathaway stock for cleaning that up for you." And we sell for around three hundred thousand dollars a share. But I can't get anybody to, to take care of it.
Oh, yeah, that's, oh, yeah, that's not cool.
Clean it one side, Tenth Street.
Tenth Street. Tenth and what?
Tenth Street, Tenth Street, the railroad tracks. So I bought a can of spray paint. I told Travis, "The recipe, I'm definitely giving you a fair notice. I'll go spray paint it, but I'll do it in the Tenth."
So were the two of them?
Yeah, they did it on both sides, but they cleaned it up. But, uh, boy, they wouldn't.
Why wouldn't they just do the other one?
I don't know. How could you not look on the other side?
Oh, yeah.
And I, the same day that they did this.
Hey, how are you?
Good, how are you?
It's good.
I'm out in the house for you.
Hey, you know, you know, you've got other ones that you don't need for that other. Okay.
Whole piece together, the other, hydrants with power washer. Sherwin-Williams with, we needed to dissolve it. It was a lot of matter, man.
There's a lot that they put in, uh, ten years ago down the, uh, the underpass of the river.
Yeah, we just need to, really do not. I'm just afraid I'd cause a train wreck.
With what?
Pulling and painting that, I'm just afraid I could cause a train wreck there. I don't know, but probably would. I shouldn't have to do it.
You don't want to be the one.
I don't want to be sitting over there going, "They followed the vendor coming after me."
Exactly.
Want to make a nice picture?
You gotta do the voice.
How's he go, Quack?
Fifteen minutes can save you fifteen.
Wrong voice.
We have a Kendall. We're back in session. Um, discussion on, uh, on vacation carries over. And I'm having Kendall to look at the minutes from last, last year to see what we did for extending, uh, the time that you could take vacations. So we'll know, uh, by the fifteenth, uh, what that is and we can, we can address it at that time if that's okay with you all.
Yes.
Very good.
Well, next up, Jody Hayner has asked for a, an executive session regarding confidential data relating to the financial affairs or trade secrets of corporations, partnerships, trusts and individual proprietorships. So I move that we go into executive session for that said reason, including, uh, the commission body, Jody Hayner and the county counselor.
Second.
Any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Sixty minutes, I'm sorry.
Oh, sixty minutes.
Sixty minutes?
This will be your last action of the day.
There's one more.
One more.
We didn't amend.
So you'll return to this room at twelve twenty-eight.
So we will return into this room at twelve twenty-eight. And was there another, I think there might be another executive session, wasn't there? Did we amend the motion? Huh?
You wanted one on the Omni lock box.
On the Omni lock box, to get an update, yes, yes.
Yeah, you want to run on, yes.
Yes, so that.
That being an executive session.
So there's one other item, yes, and it pertains to the lock box.
So I'm free to go.
Yes, you are. If you are. All favor? Hi, all fun. We have a question carry. I'm going to take a short.
Oh, hey, so they should have, uh, in the city.
Does any city have that?
Yeah, it, it should be, there should be, ask Kendall for it. Shoot, why do you go to this executive session? They had to lobby. Here, make a copy of this. Copier. And make as many copies as you want.
Yes, sir.
Well, and sorry, they might have it done too.
I understand, thanks, Chris.
What is the, what is that? What is it?
This is the right end of section. This is the same.
Be George by the hour.
Okay, so are we? Um, I think the microphones are still on, still on.
Okay, well, you tell, uh, Tammy I have a Christmas gift I'll bring back for her, the copy of all of those books. She pushed it, she got approval for payment. Since I've already paid for them, so.
Okay, she'll know what you're referring to.
We talked about it last week. You can do it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, they have.
All right. Okay. All right, so the first act I come up with three thousand four hundred and eighty-eight thirty.
Four hundred and sixty-eight, one and a half.
That's correct. Oh, I'm honored, it's a day. Good. Why don't you get dressed for school? Because, you know, I also dress always. Oh, really? Come on. Why doesn't her dress look good?
Oh, I need to.
All right, and then you have that. Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, the character is a little more high key. It's quite a few.
Okay, so she... Thank you. You're very fast, you said. Yeah, absolutely. You guys did it.
Oh. I could have paid it all at the same time.
Yeah, all of you.
Is that I could have paid it all at the same time? Your money bag was there.
You got that. I would do it.
I actually will pay it. I could have made my taxes at the same person.
There it is.
All right. All right, there. What happened, now we need... All right. Hello.
Back to you again. Thanks.
Okay.
Fourteen... Eighty-seven. Ten.
Thank you.
And four.
Okay. All right.
I'm sorry. Okay. Uh, the issue is... This, I have not actually prepared it at all very well. And he said that I had to make... So I just have to...
Okay. I will come out here and... How do you name it?
He said it was on a... Well, it's a more... It's easier.
Okay, I didn't know about the...
There are about... Well, there was one, so he said that probably should have lost count. And then there was... That... Thank you. You're welcome. Oh, oh, three, three. Oh, 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 oh. Four.
I'm assuming there are... Well, you know, these things.
Hello. It's the Lewis actions. Hello.
Hi, how are you? Very good.
Correct. Yeah, I was...
Yeah, I was... Better? I don't remember where I... Or what. They don't want to learn about that.
How we know where you're going?
So... Can you say now? Question up there.
Right, right, right. Um... There is, um... If you go down this way and there is a little... The sharpies. Two or... Later, because of our... They're all like... And then no doubt that was just right. And they'll really also... And then there's... Just go for... Not all national. Go for one walk down... Straight. And it was... Me as well. And we also...
Okay, Rose is gonna be here for Warren. She already... So, what do you...
I have the... We just go down here to Foster. We go right actually. And it's just around. Right, where you're going. There's just... (laughing)
Okay.
Yes, well, I'll... And then I was gonna say, if you go on sixty-nine and just go there's... There's armies. Going into the... Yeah. And it's not very fast, but if you go just all national all the way around, there's...
So, would you like to... Come here and talk to you?
Uh... Yeah, if you want to, I'll probably get the... On the ferry, so yeah, if you wanna stop right here and then the... Turn around this... Straight ahead. You...
Okay. I told you the name. You said, yeah. Let's see how that's called.
I bet.
Need to fill some certain places down by them.
Yes.
All right.
Tom, this Tom is... And I've been there a while.
Did you do it? All right, thanks so much. Thank you a lot. Do you know, you're not... You're not gonna screen it all for us? You have survived that, yes, for... And... Any...
I'm not sure. See what you're saying. But you would have also to say five of those. Five of the... So I... So I... Oh.
Hello, I need to do something right. Yes ma'am.
Oh, maybe I have the problem, you have the problem.
Do you need anything for your next executive session?
Let's see, what is it, Dropbox?
It's the online process.
I think it's a... Probably, that's three in just.
I'm gonna head out, let me know if there's anything you guys need for me.
Yeah, we could talk about Susan, right?
Uh, he's going in, if you want to be there.
I want you there. Okay. District Attorney, personnel matters. Uh, protective privacy, non-elected employee.
It's actually, it's actually two, you're talking about two specific identified.
Two, to identify employees.
One's non-employed, one's a possible hire.
Alright, so we're looking at probably fifteen minutes to take care of everything. Uh, three information and just.
Okay.
That'd be two seventy, for two different people.
We're talking about, we're, it's a personnel matter with the same underlying.
Uh, according to the executive session for fifteen minutes to talk about non-elected personnel, protective privacy, be two different individuals.
And, well actually, let's clarify, it's gonna be four, four separate individuals, two of them are ten ninety-nine, and one of them is a potential employee and the other one is an ex-employee.
Okay, so, so it's a... It's four.
Right.
Fifteen minutes.
Second.
In discussion. All favor.
Aye.
Okay, we're gonna be, we're gonna leave the room and we'll be back in this room at...
One o'clock.
Twelve forty-five.
Twelve forty-five.
Oh, fifteen minutes.
Well, now, I heard him say that there's a double meeting. Now, I don't know, I haven't been to his field yet, but you're probably sure.
Is it over?
Fifteen minutes, I think.
Over.
Not yet.
I was gonna put the chairs back, but...
Not yet, I think it uh...
So you have to wait for them to come back?
Yeah.
Yeah, you can tell when you report?
Yeah.
Okay. And take my presence. Sleepy already? That's not bad for a girl.
Yeah.
I can hear, oh, I can hear you.
Oh, okay.
Yes. Oh.
I mean, it's where you're at, I'm not living, right?
Yeah, one fifteen. Oh, I think that's the one I already paid, and I gave you one of those.
Okay, so, yeah, that's it, all the things that you create on that here, possible to me, today, here, so, you, 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 today.
Okay, do I keep this up?
Yeah.
Now, she said, she might have bought my house, and I put it in a collection, because I don't get so many cars, and I thought, well, that would make us good. But he, he just lived to his dad, it would've been important for him to be here, and all the paper work on that went to him, and he, he wanted to be able to buy a house, so, she told me she would take care of me.
Take care of you, okay. Are the, have that updated, for that part, that you're flipping out, or you, you have that changed, you have a featurement, that's where it'll, it'll go, but horses, you have that changed?
Okay, okay. So, I have seven hundred and twenty-one dollars, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Alright, I will do that.
Alright.
Just a month, so... I still need to pay my taxes, I don't know whether I live through it or not.
Okay, we certainly have to.
I do, too, tax, you know, you do.
Okay, I guess we're done.
I'm out.
Okay, I would ask, I would, let me do my thing, I work out of, we are out of executive session, uh, the action is, I ask permission to have a, to attend a meeting tomorrow with the city.
And I'll be, I will, if I can, get clarification and clearance from their attorney, I'll also be present at that meeting tomorrow.
Okay, there a second?
I have a second, bud.
Any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, anything else?
I'd make a motion to adjourn, if there's nothing else.
I have a second.
Yeah?
Uh, uh, uh?
Alright, two things, I gave you a Christmas letter.
Oh, yes, you did, let me find it here.
Commissioners, I'm gonna withdraw.
Hey, do we need, uh, the...
There you go. Question of the letter, I...
Longevity deal, or is that?
Yeah, that's it, right there. We got a Christmas letter, right there.
You good with this?
I'm good with that letter.
Couldn't always be able to continue, please?
I think I've signed both, all of these. So, the Christmas letter, I'm sure I'm fine with it, is it nicely written?
It is, very nice.
Valuable employees?
Um, then, on longevity, Jeff, I thought you were gonna send me a file.
What?
A file on longevity.
So, what, what I forward to you is four employees that, the press said had multiple plur.
Right, doesn't that, were you also sending it?
I didn't?
No.
Okay.
Anything else?
So, what we, what we need to do from now, from this point on, is we need to look at those four employees, to see if we can ferret out of the details, to get effective service date.
Yes.
And are you done with that?
No.
Okay.
Our goal is to do this on Friday.
Okay.
If we get it done.
So, I would, I would be happy to come in and help make sure that it's, uh, done, and done accurately.
Uh, well, I thought...
So, the spreadsheet that I had, just simply had this, this one service date, and there, and, you know, for example, like Eric Bailey, it shows him having seven years, that's not right. So, so we need to, and, and I know we can manipulate this anniversary service date within the system, so we need to go through and find out who's there that have been rehired.
Right, yeah, I get that, but I thought you had a spreadsheet, rehiring.
I, I did, but that's just order of magnitude, you know, and it came up to a hundred and three to five dollars per, per year of service benefit distributed, and that's where I kinda come, makes sense to do a hundred qualification this year.
Well, I tell you what I'll do, I'll, I'll send you all the spreadsheets for your approval before we put it on the pay.
Okay.
We need to do it on a separate payroll, besides payroll, so we're gonna try to do this probably, but I don't know if we're gonna get it done or not.
So, so all you have to do is let me know when you think you might do that, I'll, I'll come in here and, and sit right here, kinda review things, and, and...
Um, so, my next question is, who's going to be available to come sign?
What is it?
That approval.
And I need you to sign it.
Would you like to see it before we approve on it, it's gonna be a hundred dollars per year, and then, we'd like to cut an early check, because people are using the credit cards for spark funds, because they have to spend the money, and so, if we don't cut an early check for, um, there's potentially a quarter dollar bargain, and so, and then there's two bills.
Alright, fine.
I, I'm real close, bud, you just call me and I'll do your, I'm around.
Hot air. Terrible in here.
Um, I have your salary resolution ready for your increases that you adopted last week.
Okay, got it.
However, are you also going to change Justin, because if you are, let's just do it all.
This is gonna be a ten ninety-nine.
Well, right now, I have him on the resolution.
Okay, well, I'll have to ask him, you can bring it up next, next week, it'll be fine.
Here you go.
I'll talk to him.
Because I wanna change it all at the same time, before that happens.
Okay, well, we can approve it, we can approve this one, you can change it whenever.
We might as well do it all on my...
That's fine.
Uh, was he getting longevity?
Justin? Well, he's been an employee, I would say, yeah, he's, he's, he's a salaries employee.
I didn't know, so before we...
I would say yes, now, you know, he was, he was also county attorney for a few years. Yes, he is, do you agree?
Employee.
Based on the criteria, yes.
He's a non-elected employee.
For not being arbitrary and capricious.
There you go. There you go, Kendall, there's your answer.
Okay. You good, Kendall? I make a motion to adjourn for the day.
Yeah, thank you.
I second that motion. How much you give me for it?
Alright.
Two for three.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all vote. I should carry it.